We're reconvening back into the finance meeting.
I will make a motion to come out of executive session at 7:11 PM and then to adjourn finance committee. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call the May 9th, 2022 council meeting to order, and if you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And we have an honored guest here this evening, Anna Fletcher. I guess, Mayor, if you can give her the microphone, if you could lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. People have come to every meeting.
Yeah.
Strong voice.
That was a good one, yeah.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Hoynes.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Hazel Tine.
Present.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here. Ring of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 25th, 2022, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the minutes?
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the finance committee met prior to council and will again meet in two weeks. Health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no meeting scheduled or nothing to present tonight.
Thank you, public properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Thank you, special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held a meeting a few weeks ago on feeding wild, on a discussion about feeding wild animals within city limits and an issue, the issue about the number of deer currently within the city limits. We have a second meeting scheduled on, on May 18th. The meeting is at City Hall at 5:30. We'll continue that discussion. And then shortly thereafter, I will schedule a third meeting where the special legislation committee will digest the information that we've got and, and vote on the, and vote on the issue. I asked the clerk of council to, to bring back the ordinance that we had proposed. I guess it was last, I think it was last spring, we originally had a feeding wild animal ordinance, but had added cats and dogs, and we ended up removing that. That was when we created the TNR program for cats to, to deal with wild cats and feral cats in the county in a humane way. But that ordinance was an ordinance that we worked on primarily with the law director, helped construct the ordinance on feeding wild animals, and that ordinance will be, I'm bringing that ordinance back at the, at the meeting that we're having that will be next, next Wednesday.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Water and utilities, Mrs. Hazel Tine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing new to report. We had our meeting two weeks ago now, and there should be a pending RCA to discuss the funding of Medina TV to bring it to finance.
Thank you. Emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for finance. We have 22-110 expenditure over 15,000 for Cooper's leading edge sanitation. 22-111 budget amendments. 22-112 ARP 2022 grant application for the police license plate readers. 22-113 discussion of revenue loss provision for the Treasury Department reporting. 22-114 amend job description seasonal laborer. 22-115 accept friends at a cemetery letter of intent or donation for a cemetery laborer. 22-116 MOU for Medina County sanitary sewer replacement for South Prospect Street. 22-117 amend salaries and benefits of laborer job description. 22-118 amend salaries and benefits 3102E part-time pay rate scale for the MCRC. 22-119 amend ordinance 8922 MCRC membership rate ordinance, and 22-120 ARPA small business workforce assistance grant.
Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Memorial Day Parade is back on this year, May 30th. It'll take place as it has in the past prior to COVID. Lineup is from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM in front of the Common Pleas Court and down the block in front of Garfield and the library. There's a ceremony in front of the courthouse at 10:00 AM, and then they line up and the parade goes from Broadway in Washington West on Washington to Court, north on Court to Liberty, east on Liberty to Spring Grove, and south on Spring Grove and into the Spring Grove Cemetery. The ceremony at the monument at Spring Grove Cemetery will start about 11:00 AM or whenever the parade completes. For veterans groups interested in taking part, please contact Ed Zachary at the Medina County Veterans Office. This past Friday, May 6th, we held four ribbon cuttings. The first was Studio A Salon at 1162 North Court Street, Buckeye Leaf Boutique at 119 Lafayette Road, Discount Tire at 1008 North Court Street, and Not Yourself, K-N-O-T Yourself, at 238 South Elmwood. I'd like to bring to council's attention that we had a tree donation on Friday, April 29th, at 10:00 AM. Parks Director Janson Worley, his staff and I met with First Energy Representative Amy Hopkins to accept and plant 300 trees at the Kuhn Todd Conservation Area in Ward III. We're thankful and appreciative of the donation from First Energy to our community. As Councilman Lamb mentioned, the special legislation second meeting on deer is May 18th at 5:30 PM here at City Hall and encourage those interested to attend. We, we had a good group at the first meeting. Public members that are interested in city meetings, in addition to being able to check it on the website, if you simply provide your email to Council Clerk Kathy Patton, and her email is K for her first name, Patton, P-A-T-T-O-N, at medinaoh.org. I'd like to welcome Brunswick City Manager Carl DeForest. He's going to talk during the public comments, reference the bike and trike event, and thankful and appreciative that he's here. And I also like to publicly thank Carl each, each time we're together in a public forum for letting us borrow, Dan Gladish is our building official, for, for a short period of time. And last but not least, I'd respectfully ask all to keep the Ukrainian people in your thoughts and prayers as the conflict continues over there. There's both relatives here, those who have already fled, and others that are still fighting through the attacks over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll address the appropriation amendments when we get there.
Thank you, Lieutenant Merkin, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Bacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Chief Walters, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, border control, two contracts were awarded. The first was for the South Court Water Tower exterior repaint and miscellaneous repairs, and the second was the Gates Mills Bridge reconstruction or replacement project. Also note to council that we currently have our 2022 concrete street repair program out to bid. That will open next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. We have confirmation of council appointments. We have one, we have Medina City Development Corporation, Roman Pesic, term expiring 12/31/22, remainder of a two-year term.
Move to confirm council's appointment?
Second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the council's appointment?
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notice of communication petitions, there's non-unfinished business, there's non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have missed the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors, all comments should be directed to the chair in a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speaker should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public who have preferred the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Mr. DeForest?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. My name's Carl DeForest, 4095 Center Road, Brunswick, Ohio. I saw that you had an executive session to consider the appointment, hiring of a city employee, and I thought that's why Dennis Hanwell snuck me down here. Maybe you're going to hire me for a secret job or whatever. But he asked me to come down after speaking to him a couple of weeks ago. I'm here in memory and spirit of a nine-year-old boy that I met several years ago. As part of Rotary, we delivered Thanksgiving baskets to homes of people in the community who needed a little assistance, and I got to go to the home of Colin Nemeth. Colin Nemeth was nine years old. He'd been recently diagnosed with brain tumors. He lived in Brunswick Hills Township, but I liked him anyway. I took a liking to the little lad because he was a nice young man, had a really good spirit about him. And I learned a little bit about him and his fight against cancer and became friends with him. He'd bring Smarties into me at City Hall, and I'd give him Skittles because that was his favorite candy. And then about 10 months later, his grandmother, Patricia, asked me if I'd bring Tricon Bike to Medina County, specifically Brunswick, because that's where Colin lived. Tricon Bike is like Velisano for kids. Velisano is an adult bike ride to raise money for cancer research through the Cleveland Clinic, and Tricon Bike is for children aged three through 12. If they sign up, it's $15 to get involved in the ride, and they're encouraged to raise $25 for the fight against cancer. And it teaches kids that there's causes bigger than their backyard and going to the playground and going swimming and things of this nature. And so we brought Tricon Bike to Brunswick two years ago. First year, we raised $26,701. Last year, we raised $43,810. And last year, I left the funeral of an 11-year-old boy, two months shy of his 12th birthday, and I made a promise that I would do a little bit more. I would try a little bit harder to raise money for pediatric cancer research. So we're expanding our efforts for Medina County Tricon Bike. I met with Mayor Hanwell, I met with Mayor Laubon Wadsworth, and basically I'm here this evening to push the message out that if you're interested in joining the cause, Nino's already promised to donate $1,000 as Lieutenant Markham.
So nice.
Dan, Skip, Cypress, Chief Walters, don't spit your water out. I'm going to get $1,000 from him as well. But last year, we raised 20, or I'm sorry, $43,810. This year, our goal is to raise $50,000. And when the children raise money, all that money, every cent of that money goes to pediatric cancer research through Cleveland Clinic. They formulate grants to doctors and researchers to try to come up with new methods and means to treat pediatric cancer research, because statistics show about 8% of all the money raised and given toward the American Cancer Society and other funding mechanisms, only, only 8% of it goes to pediatric cancer research because the majority of people who get cancer are older, like me and Mayor Hanwell. But they probably don't have as nice hair as Mayor Hanwell. So again, this evening, I'm here to just send the message out, to spread the message with the city of Medina. I love Medina County. I spoke a couple of weeks ago at Medina County Economic Development Corporation meeting and said that I feel privileged to live in Medina County. I love the city of Medina, I love the city of Wadsworth, I love the city of Brunswick, and I've been here since 1991. And if there's something I can do to help kids, I want to do that. And if there's anybody who's got any interest in it, even Dan, even though you left Brunswick and came down here, I'm going to get $1,000 from them though. So if you have any questions about Tricon Bike, you need any information, you need help starting a team, you want to do a fundraiser, we just did a fundraiser over the weekend for Mother's Day. First time ever, we sold plants, we sold hanging baskets and knockout roses and raised $1,823 for the cause, and that will go toward our team. And if you find a child that wants to do it but just doesn't have the means to, get them in touch with me and I'll sponsor us $25. I'll pay for him or her to do the ride so that they can do it and know with confidence that they've helped somebody else out. And with that, I end my report.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming down and informing us. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay. Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 9222, resolution 9422, resolution 9522, ordinance 9622, ordinance 9722, ordinance 9822, ordinance 9922, ordinance 122, ordinance 10122.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of the ordinance and resolutions you just listed.
Second. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion?
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
At this time, I'd like to ask Anna Fletcher to come to the front here. Hope this sun's not here, I think it's okay. At this time, you know, we have a resolution for you. This resolution is a resolution congratulating Anna Fletcher on receiving the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest award in Girl Scouting, whereas Anna Fletcher is currently a member of the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio, and whereas Anna Fletcher has recently earned the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest award in Girl Scouting, and whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award is a national award with national standards that represents a Girl Scout's time, leadership, creativity, and contribution to making the world a better place, which establishes a strong foundation for a lifetime of active citizenship. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Medina, Ohio, that Medina City Council hereby commends and congratulates Anna Fletcher on her outstanding contribution to the community and Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio in attaining this prestigious Girl Scout Gold Award. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Anna Fletcher in recognition of her hard work and dedication in obtaining this award. That this resolution should be in full force and effect at the earliest period allowed by law. At this time, I entertain a motion to adopt resolution 9222.
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Resolution 9222 passes seven zero.
Congratulations. Now, it's not going to be that easy for you. If you can give us, you know, what kind of project you did or what was involved in earning this award.
Yes, thank you. For my gold award project, I wrote a book called It's Going to Be All Right. This book was focused on mental health and students because I really think especially for students at a young age around elementary school, it's important to learn about mental health and its effects because it lasts a lifetime. So this book was written by me, and then it was reviewed by Mr. Blue, who's the, who's at the high school as a mental health, mental health therapist there. And then this book was through a buy a book, donate a book, was given to every elementary school in Medina County, in Medina, in St. Francis Xavier. And then the Huddle Program bought 100 more of these books that's used to teach in the classrooms.
That's great.
Well done.
I don't even know if I count.
I'm just sitting here holding out in his chair.
Congratulations again. That's fantastic. Great job. Okay, we have ordinance 9322.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'll make a motion that ordinance 93-22 be read by title only this evening and put on the floor for discussion for a first reading only.
I'll second that. Ordinance 9322, an ordinance authorizing the zoning map amendment to change the zoning of 881 Lafayette Road from an I-1 industrial to a C-3 commercial. The first reading. Mr. Dutton, do you want to give us an explanation?
Sure, this is an application by Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority at 881 Lafayette Road. That's on the north side of the road, just west of Independence. The application is to rezone the property from I-1 industrial to C-3, which is general commercial. The purpose of the rezoning is for a multifamily housing project from Metropolitan Housing Authority. You have in your packet information regarding the use, or the existing zoning and the proposed zoning, the difference in uses, the projected use of multifamily housing. It's a conditional use in the C-3 district. That's why it was requested. The application went before the planning commission on March 10th. They unanimously recommended approval, and City Council held a public hearing on April 25th this year, which largely had positive input. Staff recommendation is also for approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments in council? All right, the next meeting, we'll do our second reading and possibly the third reading to see if there's any other discussion. But we'll keep it moving forward. And Mr. Cypress is here, and we appreciate you attending again, and we'll keep the process moving forward. So thank you. Resolution 9422, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept the Walmart community grant award for the Medina Fire Department.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and resolution. Chief Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a grant for $1,500 that our local Walmart donated to the fire department. The emergency clause has been requested because we didn't know it was coming. We didn't actually apply for it.
That's always good news.
It's a good problem to have.
Yes, it's a good problem. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 9422 passes seven zero.
Resolution 9522, a resolution authorizing the mayor to file an application for grant assistance with the Medina County Drug Advisory Commission, McDAC, for a grant to fund and support the school resource officer program with Medina City Schools.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Lieutenant Merkin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a request for approval for a McDAC grant application to fund and support our school resource program and accept the funds if approved for the grant. We currently have three SROs, one in the high school and two in the middle schools.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Resolution 9522 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9622, an ordinance amending ordinance number 5617 passed April 24th, 2017, relative to Section 1 rental of memorial pool, pool cabana during pool hours.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is to add a package rate price to our memorial park ordinance. Thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Ordinance 9622 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9722, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a temporary easement and right-of-way, right-of-entry contract necessary for the West Smith Reconstruction Project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council knows, we've accepted many of these relating to the West Smith Road project. This will be the final one. We are requesting emergency clause because we do have a hard deadline with ODOT to clear the right-of-way by May 15th.
Time's running out. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Hazel Tine.
Yes.
Ordinance 9722 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 9822, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to turn into a public limits crossing agreement with Wheeling Lake Erie Railroad Company as part of the West Smith Road Reconstruction Project.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the West Smith project, we will be installing a new water line. We do need to get authorization, basically a permit from Wheeling Lake Erie to install the water line underneath their tracks. I would request that we pass this, subject to the law director, law director's review because I know Law Director Huber's making some modifications to the language.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance, subject to the law director's review?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hoynes.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tane?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tane?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tane?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 9922 passed at seven zero.
Ordinance 122, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract to the successful bidder for the Ray Mallard Parking Lot Expansion and Dog Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This project at Ray Mallard Park, obviously to build a brand-new dog park and expand the parking lot in the amount of $266,025. Of that, $103,800 is coming from a state capital bill grant. The emergency clause has been requested because we had to be under contract by June 30th.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Hazel Tane?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 10122 passed at seven zero.
Council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Any comments tonight is just remember, be kind to one another. Thank you.
Additional council comments? Ms. Hare?
Yes, I want to remind the community that there is a survey online in regards to the special legislation that Mr. Lamb has out there. So please take the time to go to that and answer some questions about your concerns and thoughts in regards to that special legislation, specifically the deer. And I also want to let constituents know that I have been regularly getting emails in regards to the fiber optic project in our city and still concerns that there are ruts in lack of grass being planted in areas in which they were working on and to let people know that I am forwarding that information on to our city administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hazel Tane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Very short and sweet. This Saturday, in front of the Madana Courthouse steps at 1:30, I will be hosting a Women's Rights Are Human Rights rally. I invite you to attend. Everyone is welcome, and it is simply about human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional council comments? Do you have any?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
No, you.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Old guys fight. Sorry. Okay. And congratulations. Keep up the good work. We do need people like you in leadership going forward because we're hanging them up. So keep it up. Okay, thank you.
Right here, we're saving you a seat.
And mom and dad, good job. Huh?
No, I said, right here, we're saving her a seat.
Huh? Oh, we're saving her a seat. Okay, all right.
Come on, old man.
Okay, all right. Secondly, as most of you know, I tend to be a little political at times, and there's something that's come out of the White House that's really, really scary. I don't care what side of the aisle you sit on. Anytime that the chief occupant of 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue wants to promote the truth police, be very scared because that means the lies are coming. I don't care who's sitting there. So just be skeptical. Write your congressman, write your senator, tell them to stop it. We don't need it. And secondly, and lastly, the Stop Government Waste Committee. I'd like, next time you see Ralph Jock, Pat Walker, Pat Maynard Lowry, and others, thank them for costing the city approximately $1.1 million in $87,000 in additional lawyer costs that we didn't need, $200,000 opportunity lost in, opportunity cost lost in the not being able to participate in building the courthouse, and then roughly an additional $880,000 adjusted for inflation for having to go in and redo the courthouse when we get in there, in the 1969 courthouse. Had they not told their lies, we wouldn't have had to go to court. We've had a fourth ruling in our favor. And a couple of things that came out in the judge's ruling. It is clear from the deposition testimony of September 17th that Realtor Dean Maynard, the Realtor, whatever that means, is a sham party used by his lawyers to seek attorney's fees and not has been personally aggrieved by any of the alleged allegations. Okay, this is right out of the judge's rulings that they took the city on, took us to court just to get court lawyer's fees. And then it says here further, if Mr. Maynard's attorney had sued on her own, she would not have been permitted to cover her fees. Mr. Maynard is a convenient way to get around the issue. Because of the complaint is a sham, it should be dismissed, and it was. Okay, this is the type of people who are coming out and allegedly trying to protect you. Okay, again, I go back to my first comment. Watch out for the truth police because you can't trust them. Thank you.
Mr. Rose, just to add to that, can we mention again that the person listed on the lawsuit was Dean Maynard and the complainant and the attorney was Pat Maynard Lowry?
Yeah, we can say that. Thank you. Okay, this is a mom and son thing. Okay, so I don't know. We've been told we can't sue them for this, unfortunately, but we can make their lives miserable by thanking them for wasting our money. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Tough act to follow.
I think I can, I think I can do that. Just a couple of things. You know, first of all, Anna, I loved your talk. You know, you've got, your family, I know, has got to be really proud of you and your achievement and what you did because I have some sense of how difficult it is and how committed you had to be to do that. But most of all, I really enjoyed the way you spoke. It is heartening to hear the depth of, you know, your understanding and what you, what you determined to do. It was really beautiful. Appreciate you coming, and I appreciate you saying that, talking. It's great. Secondly, I am absolutely excited and thrilled about the dog park. I think, I think the additional, you know, the abandoning the dog park that we had at Memorial Pool, which was never really appropriate, the grounds weren't well, couldn't be well-maintained because of the geography. It interrupted parking once the pool opened. I think the new dog park is going to be a real asset to the community. I think a lot of people here have dogs, but not only that, a lot of people have dogs and don't really have a, maybe don't live in a home, and so they don't have a yard to walk in. And dog parks are great places for dogs, not only to go and get exercise, but to become socialized. And the plans that the Parks Director has for the dog park, I think everybody's going to be really, feel good about, a great addition to the community. Lastly, the approach I have taken in Special Legislation Committee with regard to the deer came from, originally from a request, an ordinance that we wrote, which was based on prohibiting feeding wild animals in town with the exclusion of birds and some other exclusions in that. The intention of that is, that ordinance was to deal primarily with nuisance issues because somebody may be good-intentioned in feeding, for example, deer, but their neighbor may consider then that the deer, because of that feeding, are going into their property and damaging parts of their property. So the origin of all of this came from that ordinance. The ordinance, we didn't follow up on because we inadvertently, unknowingly included dogs and cats, which are not wild animals, and so that took us a while to work that out. And so now we are back to where we were in the beginning. The survey is not a survey of the city, from the city of Madana. The survey that was just mentioned is a survey that's put out by the Department of Natural Resources, and that survey is based simply on whether or not the state would permit culling of deer. And I think it's interesting that we, it's always interesting to get a sense of where the community is on any issue. However, we don't base decisions, like our decision is not based on a survey. Our decision is based on taking a look at all the parameters of an issue, coming to a consensus, and then attempting to do the right thing. So I want to make that clear. And the meetings that we, the meeting we held, the meeting we will have, and the vote we take are both, have been and will be done once we get information from people that live in the community, whether their concern is, they like deer, whether their concern is about the number of deer, and from information from outside sources so that we can deal with the issue accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. And your comment about the dog park made me think of something. It's been rumored that we're supposed to have a nice week this week. So maybe I would say get outside, enjoy the weather before it rains again. And I think this goes into Anna's mental health issue, so get out and enjoy the weather. With that said, the council meeting is adjourned.